And it over eighteen hundred dollars.
Oh, here we go.
Okay, it's six oh.
One.
One, please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a school board workshop, which is intended for discussion purposes only. No board action will be taken tonight. We will start with the review of the board evaluation data.
Yes, so if you go in your folders, you will see a document that's called annual school board self-evaluation tool results. And so what I did is I put together your scores from two thousand twenty-three in comparison to this fall. I do want to point out a couple of things, though, that I think is important for you as you look at the data. In two thousand twenty-three, we only had four people participate in the survey, okay? Elizabeth was absent and never turned it in. So these numbers were indicative of only four members. And two thousand twenty-four, all five of you were present, so everything was divided by five. So it is interesting. You went up in some things and down in others, which was interesting. But I do think part of it is the four versus five when you look at it. I also think it's ebbs and flows in terms of how you understood the question, based on some of the notes I looked at. I think sometimes some of you went up or down, or went from a two to a two-point-five, and that skewed it, too. But this at least shows you, average-wise, where you thought we went, and where we've made progress, or where you thought maybe we've gone a little backwards. So I would say, in looking at it, your two lowest scores for two thousand twenty-four were number three, establishment of annual goals and objectives, which we did the evaluation last year, but we never set smart goals, so that actually makes sense. Using data and reports to evaluate progress toward goals, that's an increase, but it's still low because we did the data report for the first time last spring. But we still have improvements we could make in that area. And then number fourteen was really low, coming prepared for meetings and subcommittees. Those were the three.
What about number six?
Yes, comprehensive orientation, for sure. Those are the four. So three, four, six, and fourteen would be the four, I would say, were the lowest. And so as you think about goal setting for this coming year, I would say try to focus on two things. You know, all the research says don't set three, four, five, six goals, because then you won't do anything well. Pick a couple of things that you want to focus on. And then the other handout that I gave you, and I have it on my laptop, so I can type it in, is a goal-setting template for you, so that you can discuss what your goals may look like. And then I can plug it into the Google Doc as you discuss.
So should we take a few minutes just to review and then come back with our priorities for?
What's that noise?
I think it's the speaker.
Thanks, it's better.
Did the exiting do it?
I think so.
It hasn't done anything since you left.
She moved the mic in there. I wonder if that did a... She was going to text me, too.
You did stop it? Go, magic.
Yep, expected to say.
Has everyone had enough time?
Yeah.
So how would you like to do this? Do you want to go around and just discuss top priorities and go from there? Or does anyone have another suggestion?
That's fine with me.
No suggestion.
No suggestions. So, looking at these numbers, most of them are pretty close to last year. But obviously, the ones that stand out are the ones that Amy pointed out. For me, definitely number three, the board establishes annual goals and objectives is a priority. Orientation for new board members is a priority. And I know we should maybe only have two. But number fourteen is also, I think, a priority for me.
I agree with you, especially on about three and six. I think that the fact that we're doing goals and objectives right now, at this very moment, shows that we are tackling number three, which states the board establishes annual goals and objectives. So I think that if we're going to provide action steps for that, I would say follow-up on what we decide, what we discussed this evening. Schedule some follow-up on that throughout the year, the coming year.
Absolutely.
As for orientation, I mean, I think there's some formal things we can do for orientation, but there's also some informal things we could do, like if a new, we're going to have a new board member. We know that because Abby's not running for reelection and someone else is, so, not for reelection, but for election. So we know we'll have a new person. And I think an informal process could look like having a one-on-one meeting, the new board member with the superintendent, and also with at least the chair and vice chair. But I think it would probably be, I mean, why not, we're only a five-member board. So if a new board member could just have coffee, you know, have a half-hour sit-down with each board member, and just get their perspective on what the board, how the board functions and what we do. And I think that could be helpful to the new board member. And just make them feel, make that person feel like, okay, now I know, I don't know any of these people, or maybe she knows some of us, but not all of us. It could help just break the ice a little bit. But then, you know, we have the MSBA handbook, which I think each board member should get.
I have a, I have binders ready for the organization.
Did they just revise that?
Yes.
Yeah. So it'd be good for all of us to get a new copy of that. MSBA, for those listening to this meeting, it's main school board, main school board association. They have a handbook. So that's really helpful.
I think this is your job to bring forward. I'm done. So you, this is.
You're not done yet.
I've done the work. I won't be here for you to make changes. This is up to you guys.
No, your opinion now is important, though.
Well, I think the handbook that, similar to what I had when I came on board, absolutely. And then if you want to have a sit-down, I mean, whatever you feel is good for your new person. But I think the handbook is the most important, because they have to read this. And the thing is, the person coming in, we know who the person is. I believe they're going to be very well-versed in how this works. They have a strong family history in how this works. So I don't have a big worry on if they're going to be caught up real quick. I think they're going to be just fine. If you feel like you want to have coffee, that's great. That was certainly not something done when I came on board. My experience was polar opposite. So it wouldn't, it's not a bad idea, for sure.
So other than orientation, Abby, do you see any other priorities that the board should focus on?
These are, you know, the same thing, I could sit here and reiterate the same things I've been talking about for years. But will that change anything? I mean, you see, you know where you need to focus.
I agree with all of that. I mean, and I think that the, I would have said exactly the same ones that you said. I definitely feel that the orientation part's easy. I mean, so like you said, you don't want to set too many, but that's just easy. And the book, actually, because I just had the book, you do need to familiarize yourself with all the, you know, like the Freedom of Access Act, and like just little questiony weird things, you know, like that, that you're like, oh, what exactly is that, you know, and things. So I think that that's definitely important. But that doesn't mean it's like a true goal for us to have to do. We just have to make sure that they understand, you know, the book. Yeah, obviously, setting our goals, but I really do feel like we do a good job at that. I mean, like, I don't know if this is really like a clear assessment, because last year was like the first time that we evaluated ourselves, apparently. And so then by doing it again this year, I mean, I just think that we, I feel really positive about my experience here over the past couple of years, and I feel like we have gotten stuff done. And I actually feel like that's a great accomplishment over maybe some of the times past, because maybe you all weren't really allowed to get too much done, so, because you didn't have all of your information. So I think that we're moving in the right direction.
So.
Oh, go ahead. Do you have anything?
No, I, I mean, I think that, I agree with Bev. I think that this is easy to just give yourself rankings, but I do think as a board, you should be incredibly proud of how much growth we've had. And I, you know, I appreciate that that's in partnership. But a lot of what we've been able to accomplish in our district has been because of the five of you, and your commitment to the committee meetings and the work, and pushing things forward and asking questions. And so I agree with the things that are low we could work on, for sure. But I do think it's important to recognize that we have a lot to celebrate, too. And sometimes when you do rubrics, you don't necessarily do that, because we have gotten a lot done, a lot done. I mean, between facilities and policies, hiring, like, we've done some big literacy curriculum. Like, we have done some really big things in the course of a year. And it's easy to focus on what hasn't gotten done or isn't going well, but it's important to celebrate what we have done, too. And there are some things that you guys have threes on, which is always, like, I mean, your commitment to always talking about what's best for students, that's something to celebrate and is really good. There's no access to grind. You guys are about the students of our system and our community first. So I think it is important to recognize that, too. I agree with Bev, though. I do think orientation is like checklists. And I think between the MSBA handbook, the new handbook I did, that's pertinent to Ellsworth, and we have binders. We're going to put those things in. The meeting dates will be in there, and those are going to be ready to go at the organizational meeting. And then me knowing to meet with the new, the new member, and you guys meeting with the new member. I think six, you know, it might give you an opportunity to pick something else that might be a little meatier and stretch you a little bit. I think three and six are good, but I think they're things that we can do pretty easily. And so for me, I like four. Because I think that is an area we, as a system, need to grow. And I think that as a board, understanding what the different reports are, and us giving them to you, and asking questions, and us getting better at that as a system, at the board level and at the leadership level, at the classroom level, is important. But that's just me, and these are your goals, they're not mine.
I agree. So let me just, I just am throwing this out there. So what would that, so I'm, we've talked about this. So yes, we set goals, but just saying, okay, this is our goal, isn't going to get us anywhere. So just taking number four, for example.
What would it look like?
What does it look like when we meet that goal?
So if you look at the data template that I gave you, it's just a blank spreadsheet.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Okay. So what we would plug in is what the goals are. And so for something like number four, the board uses data and reports to evaluate progress toward goals and identify areas of concern. So that is a matter of when, just getting into the habit of asking questions, when we make budgetary decisions, when we start talking about curriculum in subcommittee meetings, asking, getting into the habit of asking for, what's the data, say? What does it show? And so understanding how to read data reports would be an action step under a goal like that. Culminating in a year from November, because this November at our board workshop will be our data presentation. In a year, you feeling like, okay, I'm kind of getting this. Like, that's not necessarily measurable, but you feeling like you have reports and an understanding of the types of questions to ask, and how to make decisions around those types of things, would be something that we could work towards. There won't be a measurable data point that you'll reach for something like that. But we could make a commitment that every other month, you know, a standing item on an agenda or a workshop is a different data report, understanding what it means, what's it look like, something like that. It could be something as simple as that. But I do think it's a goal of Nikki and mine to try to get all the parts and pieces of the system to start analyzing data more, to have better decision-making. I mean, we do it now, but it's not collectively through the system that we're doing that. But that's one example. It doesn't have to be number four. It could be anything else.
So number six was also another. That was everyone wants to, seems to want to work towards. And then is it number fourteen?
Yeah, fourteen would be hard to measure.
Very hard to measure.
I mean, the only, because preparedness is different than attendance.
Yes, it is.
So, I mean, you could track attendance of all the different meetings, but to track preparedness for subcommittee and board meetings is a lot different. You know, making sure you read everything ahead of time. There's no way you're going to be able to measure that, per se.
Yep.
So there's a section on here for action steps, resources, timeline for completion, and evidence. I'm thinking in addition to timeline for completion, just timeline for check-in on progress.
Yep.
Might be good.
Yep.
We actually, absolutely, under timeline, can put in, or even with the, next to the action steps, we can put in parentheses months when we would do a check-in on whatever it is that the goal is. And those can be different based on what the goals are.
So are we in agreement that we're going to choose two goals for this upcoming year? Paul, Abby, two?
Yeah, I think we could choose two, or I don't think it would be overwhelming to choose three.
Okay. I think first step is to agree on what those three are.
Always helpful.
Are they number four? Do we all agree on number four?
Yes.
Abby, Paul?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And number six?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. And is there another?
I mean, I think we could do it, I think we could do three without, I mean, I think we almost have to do three, because we're setting goals. And number three is, are we meeting our goals and objectives? So just while we're working on four and six, we can.
Work on three.
Just happens organically, yeah.
And then when do we want to do a check-in on these?
You guys go with?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your halfway point, would you write in budget season?
So in November is the data workshop. We could, even at the end of that meeting, even for just five, ten minutes, do a debrief about, how did that feel? Like, what did you think? Do you like the process? Did you like that? And so that could be a check-in for number four, right at the end of that. And then I would say, again, in that sweet spot, like March, like every three months or something.
A check-in?
Just even if it's, even if we have a workshop on something else, we could check in on our goals as a standing agenda item on our workshops. And that doesn't mean that we can't, in work, in regular meetings, talk about data and do things. And I can try to bring some of that forward in some of the meetings, you know. But we set that schedule of workshop topics for the year, and we've started working on those. But we could put check-in on goals on every workshop agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Even if it's not something that's formal and takes forever, it could just be a check-in. How are people feeling this is going? What do you think? Where are we at?
I think we could do a quick, maybe we could do a quick check-in on orientation. You know, we'll have a new member in November, so maybe check in following, at either the end of November, or if we have a workshop then, or December. And then just a quick one, like, yes, everyone got their handbook, and the new member got to meet with, if we agree that that's something we should do, meet with everybody. And then out of those meetings, there might be some other questions that come up about what further orientation would be helpful.
Yeah.
That could, those suggestions could come from any of us, so then we can set, extend the goals for that one.
So action steps, for sure, would be everyone will get the new binder, and then meeting with board members, meeting with the superintendent. Anything else?
I mean, there's only so much you can tell a new board member. I mean, really, just sitting and listening for a really long time, you know, I mean, unless you're that person and you're just comfortable anyway, then there's not, only so much orientation you can do, if given the information.
Right.
I'm thinking it's just pretty informal and not, a brief.
Yeah.
Brief and informal. And then the MSMA, MSBA handbook is, that's something that the board member will.
Yeah.
Will, and we should all, I mean, I, we all review it at the time to time.
I think I have mine in my bag.
It's revised.
Standing item.
Well, and it could be that, you know, the board chair and the superintendent check-in with that member in March or February to do a check-in. Because, I mean, Bev's right, we're not going to front-load everything, boom, right out of the gate. We'll answer questions, and then we'll have to provide ongoing support throughout the year, especially when committees are assigned and they start attending. Oh, look at you.
Set handbook.
Yeah.
But I think that would cover number three for action steps and timelines. Like, it doesn't have to be super comprehensive.
So is it fair to say that once this new person is elected, they'll receive the binder at the first meeting, or?
Yeah, my thought was that in November, because I can't remember how the election falls with our board meeting.
The election happens, and they're here less than a week later, yeah.
Yeah. So at that first meeting in November, everybody's going to get the updated handbook. I mean, we do reorganization at that meeting, and then we would start meeting with the new member.
Okay.
So you're going to do reorganization, the first meeting that the member is here, before you've taken any content from the new member as to where their interests lie and where their, you know, strengths are?
The reorganization happens, but that, but not committees.
Not committees.
Oh, that's what I'm thinking. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we would give them time.
You might want to just reach out to this person and.
Yeah, yeah, committees are done after.
And that could be, obviously, part of orientation, is discussion of committees and how they work.
Each person can talk about what committees they're on and what they think.
You might also want to make sure that before they sit in on their first expulsion hearing, that they have a chance to go to ask questions, because there were things that I was told that were not true, that took years to find out, no, that wasn't ever supposed to be that way. And I feel like there were things that were told to me that absolutely impacted the outcome of some things. And it's, I think those, those have to be very clear. And it is such an unusual part of this job that I think you guys should, I think it warrants a conversation with all the members.
It's a big responsibility.
With first time.
That's a good, I, I think that, I think that's a good idea. Abby?
Anything else on goals?
So I will type this up in this document.
Okay.
And then email it out, so that you guys can look at it. And then if you have feedback or want to make any changes and write something up, you can. And then we'll be up and running.
Okay.
That's the end of our workshop?
I think it is, unless anyone has anything else. We will end the workshop and.
Six-thirty.
And then go into our special meeting.
Yes. So there's no adjustments to the agenda?
No public participation, I'm seeing, Nikki, no? That brings us to item E, new business. Do you have a motion?
I move that we go. I move that we go into executive session under one MRSA 405, section 405, 6A for this superintendent, superintendent evaluation.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thanks.
And after this.
Bye, Nikki.
After this.
See you tomorrow.
Part of the meeting, there will be no further meeting, so.
Yeah.
Just adjournment. We'll be on the thing on.
Okay. That brings us to item F, adjournment.
Having no further business, I move that we adjourn this meeting.